With the invocation by Alderwoman Godfrey and the blessed allegiance by Alderwoman McSpire.
Bow your hands.
Dear Lord, thank you so much for many blessings that you provide for the city. Thank you for the mayor and this board of aldermen. Thank you for all of those that work hard every day to make Clinton better. We ask for your hand of protection over all of us. We know that you have a plan for this city. Let us look to you as we make decisions. We ask for wisdom to serve the folks of Clinton the best that we can. We know all we have and all we are are because of you. We thank you so much for the gift of your son, Jesus Christ, is in his name that we pray. Amen.
You'll stand and pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Alderman Chapman, present. Alderwoman Godfrey.
Present.
Alderwoman McSpire.
Here.
Alderwoman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Willbanks, here. Alderwoman Oliver.
Present.
Alderman Watt, here. Attorney Josiah Burns.
Present.
And presiding mayor, Will Purdy.
Okay, thank you. All right, start off tonight, we have a recognition of Lindsey Pardue for being the Mississippi Teacher of the Year. Uh, question about Mrs. Oliver.
Yes, Lindsey, we want to step up.
You want me to stand right here?
You can step right there, just in case you want to say something after. Yes, I would like to recognize Lindsey Pardue for receiving the Allison Clark 2025 Teacher of the Year for the state of Mississippi. This is, uh, Allison Clark is eighty-five years old. And she was the first African-American, uh, House of Representative to be elected thirty, and she served thirty-nine years. Before that, she worked as a home economic, uh, teacher in nutrition this at the, uh, community's, uh, health center in Hans County. Um, and so she started this award while she was the representative. And so Lindsey was honored this year as being chosen for her, uh, Teacher of the Year. Lindsey is a product of Clinton High School. She went to Mississippi College and graduated in education. And then she went back to get her special ed degree. She has been a special ed teacher for fifteen-plus years.
Fifteen years, yeah.
Yeah, and she started out at, uh, junior high and then transferred to the high school. She, uh, her students just love her. And what got her dedicated to the special ed, um, and the passion of working with children with disability is she had a brother who had Down syndrome. And during his fourth heart surgery at four years old, he died. And so she did some interning, seventh and eighth grade, and it was just one of her passions. And she works with every student to be a productive member of our society. She teaches skills in the classroom and uses them to live a more fulfilling, uh, life. She tries to get different, um, companies, industries to, to do their internship, like in grocery stores and that kind of thing, food service. And also at the Clinton High School, she started a coffee cart where they go to different sections and they sell coffee. So they've learned to serve and then exchange money with her help and that kind of stuff. So she really wants them to have a fulfilling life. So, in recognition, uh, and I, I thought this was very appropriate because she is, uh, the Mississippi Allison Clark Teacher of the Year for our state. And she is from Clinton. And I think, uh, it is our honor to recognize you for all your hard work. She is the first special ed teacher that they chose for this award in our state, too. So, um, Lindsey, let me give you this certificate. And you're welcome. If we can stand up.
Okay.
If all the board wants to. God has.
Can you say it, Lori?
Marley and Levins now.
Yeah.
Do you have a problem?
I got, I got it all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, all very much.
All right, we will now do two items six, approval of consent agenda items eight. Uh, do I have a discussion or motion? I would need to recede myself from six B, but move to approve items eight, seafood Jane.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve six B.
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item seven tonight will be, uh, a couple of items from the Clinton Public School District. First, we'll have the presentation of the annual budget for the Clinton Public School District for the twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. Uh, this will be from Dr. Andy Skoggan and Ms. Libby County. Thank you guys for joining us.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us. I know, uh, Libby shared some items with me beforehand. Uh, for me, I look at, I'm more of a numbers guy, and she loves to have a pie chart in case you want to see it in a different way. And if you didn't like that pie chart, there are smaller pie charts you could add for that. Uh, opportunity to stand for you, uh, to show you, uh, obviously, as, as representatives of the district, we have a, um, incredible responsibility to do the best we can with taxpayers' dollars. Uh, one of the things that I'm really proud of, uh, is the opportunity, uh, that we have because of our local funding. Uh, you see there, there's a huge revenue source for us. Thirty-six percent of our budget, uh, comes from our local sources. And so we feel like in return for that, uh, that we have to provide a great product to continue that interdependence of city and, and community. Um, a couple of things, we do have a lot of projects going on. Um, I, I was talking with Libby, we have about nine hundred and forty thousand square feet under roof. So there are always roofing projects for us. Uh, we completed two last year, north side and east side at Clinton Junior High. About to start one at Clinton High School, along with replacing the chillers and the boiler and adding a softball locker room facility for our, for our softball team. Um, one of the things out that we take great pride in also is keeping money where it really, uh, belongs, in the classroom. Uh, we've been consistently, uh, one of the lower spending districts on administrative costs. Uh, out of a hundred and forty-four districts, um, I believe we're the twenty-third lowest. Uh, but there's an inverse relationship with that. We're also one of the top five highest performing. And so we feel like making sure that we give teachers, uh, what they need in their classrooms every day is, is a, is a huge, uh, conversation for us. Uh, two-thirds of our budget is for personnel. Uh, that's the biggest thing we do. We invest in people and not programs. Um, and for the eleventh straight year, or twelve, is it twelve this year? We get the opportunity to eleven, excuse me. Uh, not requesting any increase, uh, trying to be good stewards of the money we have, not only for the projects we have now, uh, but for those that we would like, uh, to take on the future. Uh, exciting part of our strategic plan that we just finished is there's a real desire in this community for a performing arts facility, some of those things. And we really try to make sure that we're good stewards of our money now they can set us up for something, uh, with that. So a lot of, a lot of exciting things going on for us. I feel like, again, that we have an opportunity to do the best we can for our school district, which in turn is good for our community, and, and the same thing for you guys. Any questions?
Thank you, John, will you do?
Yes, absolutely. Out of your heart.
Well, thank you. And with that, I'll move to item says indeed, which is adoption of a resolution fixing to add lower tax levy on real and personal property for the city, uh, for the Clinton Public School District for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. Uh, and I'm going to turn that over to City Clerk, Jimmy Moll.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, we did a presentation, but, uh, Ms. Libby has anything to say or anything to add? Uh, you each got a copy of the resolution in your packets. Uh, as you mentioned, the, the millage did not go up, so it was the same as it was last year. Uh, and just ask for your, your sustaining book.
And before we vote, I didn't mean to, Ms. Libby, you have a man on the floor. You didn't mean to cut you off, you had things to say?
That's quite all right. Uh, just to touch on something Dr. Skoggan did mention is the, our ad valorem tech, tax base has been very strong and continues to grow. Um, that's a tremendous asset to the district and I think speaks highly of the city with the mayor and the alderman. Um, you know, we can't grow without the city and the city. You know, I think we have a very good relationship between the two of us. So we look forward to continuing that and just, you know, want to thank the city leadership for always keeping in mind what's best for the community in total. Uh, because that certainly helps us when we're looking at new debt issues, um, things to move forward with and always keeping an eye on the future and being strategic with how we use our resources. So just wanted to thank the city for that.
Do I have any motion on item seven B?
They took proof.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to, uh, item eight A, under discussion action. We have a resolution opposing public and private school choice programs that undermine public education. Alderman Willbanks, present this.
It is, um, that's a good segue from where we were just then and the success and the, uh, things that our public school system does and has done for a long time. And our, our public school system in Clinton is one of our greatest, if not our greatest asset. Um, I would argue that it and, uh, Mississippi College, and we have some representatives from them from later are probably our two best assets that keep our, our city grounded. And that the success of them, uh, is the success of the city. Without those two, uh, entities, um, I would be concerned about the success and ongoing success of our city. There are, um, state politics in play regarding, uh, what they call school choice. Um, and the use, uh, of vouchers. Uh, there are a variety of bills that have been, uh, put forth in the, in the past, all of which I think are bad for the state of Mississippi, but that's not my biggest concern. I think they're potentially very damaging to our s- uh, public school system, which would be extremely damaging to our city as a whole. Um, there is some discussion about a public, I mean, a special session coming soon called by, uh, the governor. Uh, it's being pushed by, um, our current Speaker of the House. And I think primarily pushed by the National Public Republican Party. I urge people that, that, there are a lot of people, vast majority of people in Clinton vote Republican, and I urge you, um, on this issue, just read about it and think about how it will affect our city. Uh, but, but with all that to say, uh, we've worked on a resolution opposing those programs and urging our legislators that represent Clinton and all of our legislators in the, in the, uh, state to vote against any public school choice, what they call school choice bill. Uh, and, uh, we talked about this at the work session on Thursday night, and I, I passed this resolution out. I think others have passed it around for comment. And, uh, at this point, I would urge the, uh, uh, I would move to pass this resolution on behalf of the Board of Aldermen for the city of Clinton.
I'll move to.
So do I need to read this, or? I've got a bunch of copies. If anybody wants any, I sent the press one today. I think he got a copy. I think everybody's got a copy up here, but I'll leave. I think Dr. Skoggan maybe even has a copy. Um, so, uh, if you would like a copy, you certainly can give one, but, uh, maybe the press, uh, Mr. Bell will publish that. I would love for it to be published, so.
So Jimmy, I believe, uh, Alderman Johnson most approve, two second.
James.
Or James, sorry, I didn't say.
Willbanks is the motion and.
Okay.
Man, that's a second.
So any further discussion?
I don't need to accuse myself of this still.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item eight B, this is the public hearing to discuss the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, uh, fiscal year proposed budget for the city of Clinton. Just by way of brief overview, I will say that going into this budget preparation season, we encountered some, uh, significant surprises, uh, with respect to both, uh, revenue shortfalls and cost overruns. Uh, we were looking at making up about a million dollars between filling out, plugging holes at the end of this year's budget and preparing for next year's budget. I'm happy to say that through a strategic and conservative approach, we have done so and done so in a manner I am proud of, particularly in light of the challenges we faced at the beginning. Uh, this budget maintains funding levels, uh, static across city departments with no significant operational, uh, decreases. It also provides a three percent raise for all city employees, including department heads. It's the first time they've been included in that adjustment in a number of years. Certainly, this is far less than they deserve or what we would like to give them, but it's nice to be able to do something for the city employees in these challenging economic times. Uh, it further allocates a million dollars for street saving, I believe, reflect reflecting the city's longstanding commitment to addressing that issue. It sets aside three hundred thousand dollars to begin identifying and implementing solutions to some of our drainage problems in town. These are issues that, that affect many of our residents and one the city is committed to working on. Uh, through the water and sewer fund, it addresses some key equipment needs in the public works department, as well as funding for several large water uh, and sewer infrastructure projects. Uh, and I believe it reflects a continued commitment to quality of life improvement through parks and recreation, as those special funds that we have set up for that will allow us, and their allocation in this budget will allow us to, uh, continue full steam ahead with the exciting improvements we have going on in that arena. Uh, and lastly, I'm proud to say, uh, as the, as the, uh, school district said, we were able to accomplish all this without raising your taxes, which is a big one for us. So we were happy to be able to do, to do that as well. So with that, I would just say thank you to the city clerk and his staff and all the city employees that contributed to this. It's a massive undertaking every year. Uh, I would say thank you to the board for their collaboration and participation in it. And I would open the floor to public comment. If there is any. All right, hearing no public comment, we will close the public hearing. Uh, we don't need a vote here on, to close it, do we?
No.
Okay. So we will close the public hearing, and we will have a special session on September fifteenth to approve the budget at what time, Jim?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. In the courtroom. All right, moving to item eight C, adoption of a resolution fixing the ad valorem tax levy on real and personal property for the city of Clinton, Mississippi, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six fiscal year. Uh, this will be Jimmy Ralter, our city clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, in conjunction with the, the budget, as you just mentioned, uh, unlike the school district earlier, uh, mentioned, we were able to work the budget in a way that we did not have to raise millage at all. Uh, so this is just the formality of fixing the ad valorem. At the same rate that we had it last year, it's forty-one point four nine mils, uh, which is the same, uh, as it's been for the last, uh, ten, fifteen years. Uh, there was one little moment in there where it was increased for a couple of years for a special project, and then it was rolled back to the forty-one point four nine. Uh, but with your approval, we'll go ahead and adopt this resolution and get this to the county, uh, so we can get the tax rolls squared away.
Move to second. Move to second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item eight D, this is a resolution pending two streets within the Rising Spring Development. Mr. Balter as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the next few items are all in relation to the Rising Springs, uh, development project. I, I know, I saw Ms. Laura Jackson back here. I don't know if she wants to, to step up and say anything. Uh, but this resolution, uh, is a request from the, uh, the committee that's overseeing this project. As you know, it's, it's ongoing. We've, we've built out the, the basis of the roads in phase one. And so they're established now. We're working on getting the plat in place. Uh, several of the roads were existing roads that just extended into the development. But there was an east-west road added and a, and a small road that circles the, uh, what we're calling the, the Rising Spring Square, uh, which will be kind of a feature center part of, of the development. Uh, and those two roads did not have names. So the committee came up with Rising Spring Avenue, uh, for the main east-west thoroughfare. And then, uh, Chalk Tall Way would be the smaller road that orders the, uh, the square.
Was there anything like that?
No, I think I wasted steps walking up here. He did a great job.
Stay tight. Second.
Motion second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight E, uh, this is to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Century Construction to provide professional services related to phase two of the Rising Spring Development Project. Mr. Balter as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is, Century Construction has been our contract manager, uh, construction manager for the projects thus far, uh, through phase one. And what this is basically extending out that contract, continuing on the same agreement, uh, for them to continue those services in phase two. So I'd ask for your approval on that.
They've been fabulous at what they've done. Just tell you, having circled the committee, so I'll move to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight F, acceptance of the bid by ProBity Contracting Group LLC as lowest and best bid for the Spring Square package, including the base bid and alternates one and two. It's authorized the mayor to execute a contract with ProBity Contracting Group LLC to provide those professional services related to phase two of the Rising Spring Development Project. Mr. Balter.
Got a little wordy on that one. I apologize. I'm trying to fit it all in there.
Working on your titles there.
This, this, uh, section of the bid package is, again, for that, that focal square, the Rising Spring Square and the adjacent site, uh, around it. We had a number of bidders. We had four bids that came in. They were all excellent, excellent contractors. Uh, we're grateful for, for their interest. Uh, the committee met and went through the, the proposals and recommended, uh, the lowest and best bid was by ProBity Contracting Group LLC. Uh, and so I just bring that recommendation to you. I've sent you the, uh, you should have received the, the bid tab along with the summary that explained what all was included in that package.
And I guess I'll, I just for some clarity about what this, around the Spring Square package will include. So the square will be completely finished once this work is done. The amphitheater stage will be built. The spring will be, it's, it's half the surface now, but the spring feature with the fountain will be completed. And all of the landscaping and sidewalks and lighting around the park will be done. As li- as well as the parking, the public parking and all that that will be on either side in adjacent lots.
Excellent. That's nice. Uh, Lori, do you mind talking about, because that's not, we don't believe that's all the money we have in this tranche and just maybe talk a little about, we have money left, actually, that's right.
That is correct. So if you are also to take into consideration the next item, which.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can, we can talk about it a little bit longer. It's okay. But once you consider items F and G together, there will still be a little over one point one million dollars remaining in the second tranche of money from the state of Mississippi. So there was eight million in the first tranche, eight million in the second tranche. That second eight million after these are done will still have one point one million. We have some, um, money set aside. That one point one million will stay in the city's treasury until such time as we decide. Some final pieces of the puzzle that we're waiting on some additional information for before we decide how to spend that last one point one. That will come at a later date to the Board of Aldermen for approval.
There, there will be a couple more steps to this. These are two of four bid packages that we're actually letting out on this project. Uh, those last two will be, uh, a few more wrapping up things. And one of them is the, the final course of asphalt over all the roadway. So all that has been accounted for, and like she said, we still have about a million dollars left, uh, that we will zero in once we get to that point.
All right. Got a motion?
Make to approve. Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor? I don't care. Item eight G, this was just as long, so we'll see if I can do it in one break. Acceptance of the bid by Bulldog Construction, Inc. as lowest and best bid for the Rising Springs Phase Two concrete package, including the base bid and alternate one. It authorized the mayor to execute a contract with Bulldog Construction, Inc. to provide those professional services related to phase two of the Rising Spring Development Project. Mr. Balter.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
You see, I copied the first one and just changed the names of a couple of things.
We need to shorten it, I think.
The, uh, the, the, the basis is the same, just the, the, the focus of this one's a little different. Uh, this is the sidewalks, curb and gutter, uh, dumpster pads, things like that that'll, will kind of add some unfinished touches to the project. Uh, and Ms. Laura, of course, if you have anything else, welcome that.
Concrete's boring.
I like this. I'm going to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ball. Uh, item eight H, discussion action, approval to advertise, find approval of necessary agreements with the Mississippi Department of Transportation for Shantay Sewer Relocations, acquire federal aid project from US eighty, Clinton Rain Road, Shaw Road. Mr. Lilly, I thought it worked correctly. We'll take this.
Thank you. Uh, as you guys recall, should recall, uh, earlier this summer, uh, you approved us, uh, with the lowest and best bid to relocate, uh, a sewer line right there between McLemore and South Capital, as well as for the split casing, uh, on the sewer line right there in front of, uh, Montio's as well as the, um, traffic, uh, modifications that M-Dot is doing here in town. Well, we, we since, uh, have been, um, required, or we've been informed that we're required to, um, two things, one, full permits for the, the work that we were prescribed, and two, advertise it in, in a way that there may be some reimbursement for the, the requested work to be done. Uh, so with your approval, uh, we'll move forward and try to get this, this Highway eighty project done.
Make to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Q, item eight I, that's for Architectural Review, uh, eleven oh six Industrial Park Drive. Mr. Edward, that community development director, we'll discuss this one.
Jeff Finch has submitted construction documents for an approximate, uh, six hundred square foot addition at this location. Uh, this is the location there across from the state welding, uh, just south of the, uh, railroad tracks. It's property is owned by one, and this is an approved use for this district. The addition, uh, this is an aerial view of it. Uh, that you see in the yellow is, uh, the approximate location of the addition there. Be building, they're leaving it up with the, uh, other, uh, part of the building, uh, there. This will be used for office space. It does, excuse me, it does meet our dimensional requirements. Uh, the Architectural Review Committee has forwarded their recommendation for approval, recommending, uh, with the recommendation to use the same, uh, material on the front as the size to paint. This is the front view of the building. This is the building that, uh, that put the, uh, approved or put the, uh, addition on. Uh, and then also to add windows to the front. One of the things the applicant has pointed out is they're trying to do away with those windows that are facing west on there because of the heat on there. And, uh, he's wanting to use stucco or either ephesus on the front of it there, painted the same color as this one, and then put, uh, fake windows on the front like they'll, uh, sculpt out of the, uh, stucco, uh, there to make it look like windows. Uh, the entry, this is the, uh, the show brick at first, but decided to go with the stucco. And the entry for the office will be from the north there under the porch, uh, you see there. So, uh, they did ask to not have to put, uh, operable windows in there, but to, uh, that they would, uh, dress up the stucco and keep the colors, uh, the existing building there. Uh, the planning commission also recommended approval as well. And, uh, it's, it's just up to your approval. I don't think, uh, Mr. Finch is here, um, tonight. tonight. Those are the recommendations from the, uh, from the committees.
So the recommendation was to keep the same exterior as the rest of the building?
Right. Well, it's two, three different, uh, materials.
I couldn't tell what it was. It looked like there was metal and siding.
Metal CMU and then, uh, some lap siding on the front there. Instead of the lap siding on the front, they would like to extend it out and just put the, uh, straight, uh, ephesus, uh, or stucco on the front, uh, with the, uh, fake windows with the shutters.
So it will be fake windows, just like in the same placement that those are, just, just?
That, uh, there's not a door coming out the front, so we're not looking. Right, the door come up from the north, uh, I don't have the witness to that. Uh, so I'm sure what we'll do is get them to put it in a uniform fashion there instead of, uh, one side of the door.
And the colors for the whole thing would be the same?
The, no, the, he wants to keep. Right. He wants to keep the same, uh, colors that's on the front of that building. And then the, uh, receiving and shipping, uh, building, he would like it to remain the color it is on there. He wants the separate colors, uh, for those designations.
Um, I was just noticing that the Architectural Review Board was requesting the same colors.
Same recommendation for the whole building.
For the whole building and so did the painting and zoning, if I'm not mistaken?
No, don't recall them.
Okay. It's just the windows and stuff.
Mr. Finch was not at the Architectural Review Committee meeting, but he was at the Planning Commission meeting to explain, you know, why he chooses to, uh, use two separate colors, sir.
I think it's in an industrial area and if you want to differentiate your office from the corporate supply areas, then I think that's fine. So I'll move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? We've got a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight J, we have subdivision variance for 2151 Pine Haven Drive. This is Mr. Edward as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Board. Matthew Jones is requesting a variance from the city subdivision regulation as it pertains to the mandatory connection, uh, to the public sewer system. The regulation does require tying into the city sewer system if the sewer lines run with the 100 feet, uh, of the property line. Uh, this is the property, uh, you'll remember this is, uh, Williamson, uh, Williamson Estates. Uh, this is lot eight and Williamson Estates already had three, uh, come through, uh, with these variances were granted to get to the sewer. It's a high pressure line there and he would have to put a grinder pump and also because of the elevation of his lot there, would have to put a grinder pump in in order to tie into the city sewer on there. This property is owned residential estate. Notice of public hearing was published as required by our regulations. Uh, the planning commission recommend, uh, recommends approval as submitted.
Is this the last lot that's in that, uh, situation?
No, ma'am. I, I think you'll still see the two lots, well, one of the lots behind, uh, behind it there. You'll see it's got a, uh, has already gotten a, uh, this one has already gotten a, uh, variance, but you still have this one. Now, the larger lot, uh, it was approved for them to use a individual wastewater anyway because it's so large and you had some bodies of water that they had to go through.
So we have this one and possibly one other?
One other, yes, ma'am.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A third. We've got, we've got a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight K, this is a rezoning request for a number of parcels along Highway 80 to Mississippi College. Mr. Edward, please do this.
And, uh, Bill Townsend and, of course, Laura Jackson are here. If there are any other questions on this, they are seeking to rezone, uh, these properties. Going here, uh, along the line. This shows you the whole development, uh, there, uh, and then this is the area we're looking at today. Uh, part of that, well, uh, part of it still is owned, um, special use and then also single family housing in the yellow there. So, uh, the red is the zoning that, uh, they're seeking to, uh, go to. This is, uh, bounded by Spring Ridge Road and, uh, Fulton Raymond Road, Highway 80 to the north and the I-20s in a commercial corridor. Uh, ordinance does require that the property, uh, is not being used for institutional uses on there, that it's, uh, be changed to an appropriate zoning, uh, on there. Of course, uh, C2 would be the appropriate zoning for this. Uh, this is our future land use map from our, uh, comprehensive plan in 2018 and it, uh, had already, uh, suggested that we go the direction of, uh, C2 with that. And there's the property that they're seeking to rezone. And if it, uh, approved, it'll, uh, keep all the area between the boundaries we just talked about, uh, as C2, general commercial. And again, it's just part of the Rising Spring Development, conceptual drawings, uh, master plan have already been approved by this board and we just need to get this, uh, changed before we can move on to Phase Two.
I'm assuming the C2, if you kept going west, would go, continue all the way through.
Through OBs and, right, OBs, dagel buildings?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second.
All motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight L, this is a dimensional variance for 132 Pine Haven Place.
Light and April turn into here, um, on this, and they're seeking a dimensional variance to construct that 1,800 square foot accessory structure at this location, be 16 foot high, the, uh, uh, ridge. This is the location on the Pine Haven Place. Uh, this is the aerial of it, uh, that in the yellow is the approximate location, uh, that they want to put their, uh, storage building. This will give you another aerial view. You can see other, uh, storage, uh, buildings, uh, like it on it. Uh, and then coming into Pine Haven Place, you'll see more there. Uh, this, uh, structure would be located about 70 foot from the, uh, house and 35 foot from the closest side. 82 foot from the, uh, rear. Uh, this is about the location, the area, area showing there, uh, the, uh, uh, west part of their property, or I guess, uh, say the, uh, southwest part of the property is, uh, has a straight fenced creek going through it. And so a portion of this property is in the, uh, regulated flood plain. Uh, they're not building in the flood plain, but that was one of the reasons, uh, I sent you the, uh, their, uh, reasoning for the dimensional variance in your package on there, uh, on there. And that was one of the reasons is because of the flooding they get there in the back and, and needing to have a place to store their tractor, tractor and other implements, uh, to take care of these things, uh, as well as other property that they've got. But, uh, the notice of public hearing was published and the property was supposed to just required by ordinance.
Are there any networks that had any?
Not had anything with the signage out. Uh, this is the general look of the building. They'll have the, uh, open, uh, lean two-part basin, straight fenced creek. So it would be away from the house and then the, uh, garage opening would be, uh, uh, towards their pub.
Make to approve. That's the color?
And that's the color, yes, ma'am.
And there's a vacant lot on one side. Which side is that on?
The vacant lot, if you face it, would be to the left. Same side that it's on, in the back of that here. This is a vacant lot here. It belongs to the same owner of this. And then you've got, uh, other buildings as well.
So you've had nobody call or?
Ma'am?
You've had no one to call and?
We have, and they're also, uh, building a privacy fence, uh, that would go along the front edge of their house. That's in the, uh, northwest there and then to the southeast on there that, uh, I think, uh,
And others in the area.
And there's several, uh, different type in there, uh, variances have been granted in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. We've got a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Item eight N, resolution for unkept property located at 1,004 Amherst Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. Board. And this is a, just renewing a resolution that, uh, y'all had done, uh, our board had done two years ago, uh, on this. We, the resolution is only good by state law for two years and we had to bring it back before you. So since, uh, uh, June of '22, we've been cleaning this property. Uh, it was posted as required by our ordinance. Uh, these pictures were taken today, uh, of it on Amherst, uh, there. And just asking you to direct the Department of Community Development to, uh, take such actions as is appropriate under state law on that. The notice was posted on the property and at City Hall as well, a note, as a notice being mailed to the, uh, address shown on the Heinz County Land Row. And this property is not at this time on Secretary of State's 450 land.
Well, at, at some point, is there no law that allows us, once we have exceeded the value of that property and we continue to put money in it? Is there, is there any, you know, resolution for the, for the city to be able to take the property and sell it?
The state law does allow for the city to do that. If it goes down into, uh, also the taxes have not been, looks like hadn't been paid, uh, since '22 as well. Uh, once it goes to the Secretary of State's, uh, office, we can work with them, uh, to, uh, purchase or, uh, get the property.
I would like for us to do that and cut our losses with spending money, keeping it up and, and sell it and at least repay some money from that.
Is there a timeframe for the Secretary of State's office tax it all or is it just when they get to it?
It's, uh, at least three years of, of not, right, of not, uh, being redeemed.
Isn't this the same property that the house burned? And we, we tore it down, we put it on the slab. We've done a lot of work on this.
Uh, so far we've, uh, the city's put in, uh, over $15,000 in this property.
So we have one more year before it can go to the Secretary of State?
When they do that, now, we're not, I don't know how, not quickly, we'll, uh, act on that, but that, uh, process will take three years, yes, ma'am. And of course, the property owner does have the opportunity to redeem it as well.
We have a motion yet. I'm going to move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion in second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving to employment items, uh, item nine A. We have approval for the city of Clint Police Department to hire, uh, certified officer, $24.27 an hour, Mrs. Cooper. Uh, pending successful completion of the hiring process.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board. I stake your approval. It'll be number 60.
Also, for approval.
Second, second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. All right. We've got the, uh, need for, uh, short executive session for a couple of employment items, but we will return after that. I don't think it should take very long, but we will be back shortly. That's a good one. Thank you, we have come out of executive session. Thank you, we have come out of executive session. We took two actions in executive session to terminate employees. Do we have any other business to come forth to the city tonight?
May I make your approval?
Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.